I'd like to call the Board of Trustees regular meeting Monday, March 6, 2017 at 6:30 in order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of meeting agenda? Any additions or deletions?
I make a motion we approve the meeting agenda as written.
Motion by trustee Clifford, supported by trustee Gurley. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Approval of minutes 2/6/2017, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of February 6, 2017.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Treasurer Honnold, supported by trustee Clifford. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. Public announcements? Any public announcements at this time? No public announcements. Public comment? Yes, sir. Could you step through my call, please?
Sure.
It's probably not the right time to ask, but spring is coming and seniors like I have a pension right to have happen. And in my particular instance, I would like to have some pickleball courts. And we'd have plenty of room and all it takes is paint and a couple of nets. And you can either put them outside, which will work there, but I think if you've got an available building, you could even put one inside. That's if the old building isn't being used. And that's what I would like to see. I'd like to see some pickleball courts for the seniors.
So how much room do you need for pickleball?
Uh, I'm sorry?
How much room like on a court do you need for pickleball?
You need 44 by 20 and then you've got to have some outside room like five to six feet all the way around that. But the court itself is only 44 foot and it's 20 foot wide. And that is very small.
In the old building?
Got to be pretty close to that size.
And we currently have it stored in there?
Yes, there's currently, it's, the room is being used for storage, but the building is not technically occupiable right now. There's no water available in it, heat's been turned off.
No restrooms?
No, sir. Okay, so you've got the room inside, you've still got the room outside. You've got basketball courts, you've got tennis courts, you've got that hockey thing out there that nobody uses and all of those seem to be large enough to put the courts in. And it's really not that expensive. The paint I'm talking about is to paint the lines. I would assume, and you guys have somebody on your agenda, some support person, it's probably a hundred dollars for nets. A piece. And with that, they give you two new paddles, too.
When I'll take, when I'll do this, trustee on the board, sir, I'll take upon myself the price of those items and we'll discuss it. Coming up here at a meeting next weekend, I'll have some votes on what do it cost to do that for the township and we can go from there on a vote. I let us on total cost, I'll talk to Mr. Tronley about what it would take to set that up and we'll see what we can do. We'll take it under advisement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Another public count.
I just wanted to ask, since you changed the meeting time and the previous month in December you adopted the yearly thing, was it published that you changed the meeting date? The meeting time? Because otherwise this is not really official meeting. Because you adopted the schedule for the year.
Yes.
Guess what?
It was sent to the paper for publication.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Another public count. No other public count. Consent agenda. All audience listeners, those consent agenda are considered routine by the township board and will be drafted by one motion. According to established township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or public soul requests at or prior to the meeting, in which event the chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under Agenda Item Number 9 below. Approval of consent agenda shall be by a majority roll call of those present and voting.
I make a motion, excuse me, I make a motion we approve the consent agenda as written.
I have a motion by trustee Clifford, supported by treasurer Honnold. And which would you do the?
Aye, we'll do the. We have prepaid to the amount $305,274.68. The current bills list in the amount $1,811,212.51. For a total bills this month of $2,116,487.19.
Chief of Attorney, clerk, roll call please.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Honnold?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Trump?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Yes?
I just had a question on the rigman construction. I thought that was still in litigation or something where the county may have to pay that because it was not township that hired the rigman.
Yes, we did.
Okay, we hired rigmen?
If you'd like to, audio might be here to answer me.
I was under the impression the county took over doing their repairs away from us.
They did, they did.
So then why are we not fighting them to pay for it instead of?
Because it's a, it's a separate contract.
So there's still a larger bill out there yet that county may be responsible?
We had no contract with rigman construction regarding that bill. Just this bill.
Just this bill?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Number nine. Unfinished business. Drive-up window proposal?
I'd like to make a motion to take.
Thank you. Second. Motion by Treasurer Honnold, supported by trustee Clifford. Any other questions, discussion?
We did, we did a roll call for the consent adjustment of the bills, but we didn't have a motion to support for it. So we just had to wait a couple of days, so she has a motion in support for the minutes.
Okay, that's fine. Apologize.
No problem.
I got it. I'll track. Need a mo, need a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll need that motion to accept the consent agenda.
Wasn't the consent agenda motion made already or seconded?
Yeah.
Who was that? I believe I made it.
Yeah. I can't be seconded.
I guess it's not.
Okay, do you have it?
The motion was made for the consent agenda, but the motion was not made for the orders of bills.
Oh, okay, that's right, that's right.
That's fine. Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make, make a motion we accept the orders of bills.
Second. Thank you. Motion by Treasurer Honnold, supported by trustee Clifford. Any other discussion? Chief of Attorney, clerk, roll call, please.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Honnold?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Trump?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Noise removed. Unfinished business, drive-up window proposal, 98. You made a motion table, supported by trustee Clifford. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion passes.
What motion? We can hear you guys. What motion?
Can you hear me now?
That's it, that's it.
Can you hear it now?
Can you hear me back?
Can you hear me back there?
Now we can, yeah, it's a little bit of a while.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Yes, candor, just let us know.
What was the, what was the motion on?
The drive-up window proposal to table. Okay. Number 10, new business. TJ Enterprises LLC annual renewal providing permit.
Hi, I'll introduce myself. My name is Heather Piperzette Bowles and I'm here representing TJ Enterprises tonight. I was at the last week's planning commission meeting where they had approved the renewal of our special land use permit. Only really new thing out there this year, I know you guys drove by. The site is the barn on 32 Mile Road is coming down, which was part of the original plan. We hired a, not hired, they're taking the wood. They're going to take the barn down piece by piece and they're going to either re-salvage the material and sell it as new things or sell the material outright. So that is coming down. Other than that, we've had, you know, no concerns that we know of that has brought to our attention for anything out there. We've been right on track with our original plans, however we're going to get the material out and the direction that we're moving in the lake to get that material out. So I don't know if anyone has any questions that I can help with or?
Any other questions? No questions. Mr. Safe, any concerns?
Yeah, the only communication that we send to the board is the volume that we track here is based on the sales number. And the agreement calls for a purification and the township hasn't employed for this because of the economy. And I think Terry mentioned that it will be surveyed in a year or two.
Yes.
Because the actual removals are a little bit larger than what was shown on the prints. But if the board agrees to that, there's, we have no engineering issues either.
Same as before. Correct. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we discussed it at planning and it was approved, just like we said, so. At this time, I'd like to make a motion. We accept their annual renewal, we approve their annual renewal as approved by the planning commission.
Thank you.
My second.
Thank you. Motion by trustee Clifford, supported by trustee Gurley. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion passes. Thank you. Plot plan preliminary and final certification of grade review request. Mr. Safe?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. This item has been discussed since 2009. It basically addresses the issues with the setbacks and the grades on new construction and any drainage issues. And in my communication, you've seen that letter. So here we are again. Reviewing that and if there's an avenue to adopt this as a standard procedure or an ordinance for, to eliminate any future grading issues or issues between adjacent properties regarding?
Code enforcement issues, basically.
And grading issues, yep. It's basically a three-step process and we'll help the building department to establish standards for that. Right now, there are no means for the building department to check any grades or setbacks or anything like that. So with our surveyor and the planner, we would work with the building department to enforce the proper setbacks and grading and all that good stuff.
Which I can tell you, working with code enforcement, we've had numerous issues with this and this should take care of that problem once and for all with this being established.
Needs to be reviewed by who?
Mr. Safe?
Mr. Safe?
Yes. The plot plan at that stage, the planner and the building department would be involved.
Which, and I should rephrase that. We still have existing ones out there that are already done, but anything new, anything started, ill reviews, we don't have these, we won't have these problems. The biggest one is sheeting of water onto adjacent property owners, which is a big deal. We have that, especially coming up in the spring of the year, is when we get numerous complaints of property owners upset their neighbors, raise their grade and shed water on adjoining properties and we have no way to verify it, so.
Yeah, basically it'll set the standards for how high the house, what kind of slopes you have, what kind of drainage on the sides of the property. This is specifically for small flats. The large parcels not going to have a problem, but the smaller flats will always have a problem with the, you know, not installing or providing swales and ditches between the properties and collecting all that water. Or the house is too high and shedding somebody's water to the neighbors and there's no means for your building department to check that they're, they don't have any survey equipment and they rely on the contractor to give them all that data. But after everything's said and done, you know, things are totally different from what 's shown on the plans.
And you'll, excuse me, Tri-County will be reviewing everything that comes in there with the building department?
Yes. And again, it's a three-step process. We will check in at the submitted stage and then when they set their, their first preliminary grade, what we call, when they have their surveyor come out and set those grades and we will send our surveyor to check those according to the approved set of plans. And then once they start putting the basement in and finish with that, we'll send them out again, just to make sure that they did according to the approved grades. This has been a very, very typical procedure with communities around, I mean, Lanes is the only community that does not have something like that. It's very typical around, you know, McComb and Chesterfield. And they expect that. All the developers and builders, they know they need to provide all that data and need to be checked by the township or township surveyor before they start construction.
Any other questions, Mr. Safe?
I have none. So we'd like, since this was done in 2009, we will draft some procedure documents for the attorney to review and if it's acceptable, we'll have the board adopt them as a standard procedure or an ordinance.
So we just need a motion to go forward on that, then?
I make a motion we go forward with the plot plan preliminary and final certificate of grade review request as stated on the, stated on the agenda, proceed by Tri-County.
No second.
Motion by trustee Clifford, supported by treasurer Honnold. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Safe. RC TPW seasonal personal hire request.
Good evening. Everybody should have received a proposal request that I submitted earlier in the week. Again, this year, we'd like to institute the seasonal position. It may seem like it's a little early, but usually once we get through all the processes and that, the way the weather's acting, we're going to be right into it. As I indicated in my, in my request, I would like to rehire the gentleman we've had for the last two years, Dolan Brokowski, but there is a little bit of a hitch. You know, he is currently going to college. There is a possibility he may be entertaining an internship, which would prevent him from coming back. I spoke with him earlier today. He hasn't, he does not have a clear idea yet on this internship. He should know later this week. But what I would like to ask the board is to rehire him if he is available or put this right out for advertisement if I find out later on this week that he's not able to return. It would be under the same guidelines as we've used in the past few years. $10 an hour, no benefits.
Thank you. Thank you, Pam.
That was pretty self-explanatory in your letter there, Pam, thank you. I make a motion we approve Tam's request that if Dolan can't come back, he goes to his internship, that Tam proceed with hiring a new person at the same wages, the same terms, no benefits.
Second.
Motion by trustee Clifford, supported by treasurer Honnold. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. Code enforcement backup position. As everyone knows, we hired a new gentleman, Phil Carmotta. And as lucky as it, Shannon Murray has been speaking with him because we still have quite a few outstanding cases with Shannon. Shannon agreed to bring Phil up to speed and if he is needed to be a backup code enforcement officer, Phil can then perform his duties at any time, goes on vacation or is ill or anything like that. Or the biggest thing for us is going to court. I think Mr. Jocke would agree with that, that we still have the outstanding cases. So we got the best of both worlds. Shannon will be a backup to him. He's already an employee, so we don't have to hire him. And we have Phil, who I think is doing a fantastic job right on the gate. So just need permission to have Shannon as the backup code enforcement officer.
Mr. Trump, he's taking his place, but at that point in time, if he takes Phil's place, I mean, Phil doesn't get paid at the same time, which we're either paying one or the other.
Correct.
Okay.
The only time we pay both of them is to bring them, for him to review all the cases with them, bring them up to speed, so he knows.
Bring them up to speed in the past case.
Yeah. And, and if they're both needed in court, we would have to pay for both. But that would only if they would be asked by you or by the board to go.
And Mr. Jocke can explain very briefly on that. These cases that flow from Shannon to Phil, Phil's going to continue working on them, of course, and certain evidence might come, become known to Phil and there's other evidence that would be known to Shannon. So we may need to call both of them in a particular case if it goes to a trial. Doesn't happen very often that we have to go to a trial.
I can understand that though, but I just said one point in time, I didn't want to be paying two people for no reason.
Right. And then we won't have to train a backup person or nothing like that, he's already up.
Yeah, Shannon's already been here.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we retain Shannon Murray as the backup code enforcement officer. My second.
Motion by clerk Candell, supported by trustee Gurley. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion passes. Thank you. Border review second alternate. Like to appoint Ron Zemans or Ryan Holt J. Zemans. Ron has been a border review member for many years and he would like to be the second alternate and that fulfills the needs of Tom Jack.
I'd like to make a comment this time. I worked with Ron for years and on the border review, great guy, been there forever. A lot of you know him out of the audience, probably. He wants to be a second alternate. He's retired now, so he can devote more time to it than when he was, that's the reason he retired before, he was so busy with his business. He had a couple of health issues, but now he's coming back, he'd like to be an alternate and I'm all for that.
Motion?
I'd like to make a motion to hire Ryan Holt Ron Zemans as an alter, second alternate on the border review as requested by Mr. Ron Jack.
Second.
Motion by trustee Clifford, supported by treasurer Honnold. Any other questions?
This is also required by the state to have a second alternate. This is not a choice that we're making on our own.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Pitney Bowes postage meter contract renewal. Letter out. Anybody have any questions regarding this?
No, I haven't. I'm, I trust that whoever handles this is doing the right thing here. It's a renewal, it's not, you know, is it something that's major enough that we need to rebid it?
My recommendation would be to continue with Pitney Bowes. They were, they are the cheapest and we have history with them.
Okay. Thank you.
I just didn't know if it was major where we were forced to be to bid it and need be.
I did, I did check it out. I called the post office. I got a list of the people that the post office recommended. I checked with each one of those. One did not call me back and I got information on the other two and Pitney Bowes remained the cheapest.
I trust you did your homework the way that's, that's.
I did.
Thank you.
Motion?
Make a motion that we retain Pitney Bowes for our postage meter for the contract period of three years. At a cost of $51.22 per month.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Motion by clerk Candell, supported by trustee Clifford. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion passes. Thank you. Letter G. Budget workshop meeting schedule. You have some dates for us. What I'd like is all department heads, once again, to be involved in the budget process. Please start working on your wants and needs list to submit and what dates are we looking at?
I didn't pick dates because I wanted to know what the board would like, if they want, what day of the week, when to go.
Keep in mind, we have an event in April coming up too, so we should get one in prior or two in prior to that if we could. And this is due on the June meeting, so.
Second week of April will be out for everybody. So I don't know if the board wants to do this.
What would be your suggestion?
Well, if we don't have to be here in the evening, it would be nice to do it during business hours, but I know that makes it a little difficult.
What is the, when is you're available?
My best time, I could do it during business hours with my, with my personal job as long as it's after 2 o'clock.
After 2 o'clock. I can do anything with after 2:00.
Okay, great.
Okay. We did 2:00, 3:00, 5:00.
3 o'clock, would that be better for you, Dex?
3:00 sounds quite great.
Give you time to get here and stuff?
Yeah.
Because I think a two-hour meeting is sufficient for us to, anything longer than that, everybody gets kind of restless.
Or any of these.
It takes more than one meeting, I don't have a problem with it either.
We'll probably end up doing at least four if I had to guess.
Okay, for March, you want to do one a week or, I mean, how do you want to start this? Every other week?
Well, we could technically set it at one a week depending on what we get done at each meeting, but yeah, that's fine. I, what is it, my first year on the board, what does it normally take?
Takes months.
Depends, yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm just asking, I don't mean to sound stupid here, but.
No, we go over every line item of the budget for every department. And then there's two budgets. There's the, the next year's fiscal year budget. And then we have to go over the one for this year, the 16, 17, and that's the line item where you have to adjust it to.
I sat in a bunch of meetings at the road commission for years for my department, but I, we always had similar, our department heads in, but mostly engineering and stuff that related to. that related to traffic control. But no problem, if we can set one a week with me, that's fine.
There is one other issue, too, that... there are some items on there that we'll need some explanation from Mr. Bailey, from Stuart Babel. We'll talk. He should probably attend one of the meetings, one of the earlier meetings, I would say.
Right, one of the first.
So without authorization for that, too, for him to attempt to... so he can explain some of the stuff to you guys.
The budgets both have to be approved by your board by June 1st or a June meeting. So what day of the week do you guys wanna have these meetings?
Do you guys start next week or the week after, whatever you guys prefer?
Next week's fine with me.
All right. All right. Would you like next week? How about Thursday?
Actually, I'm out of the office, we'll see you Thursday. She says Tuesday.
And then Monday, Tuesday, the following weeks, but...
How about Tuesday for Thursday?
Tuesday fine for you?
All right, I'm in board of review. Come on, you'll be there.
Tuesdays and Thursdays are good for me, too, if we can...
But that's just that week.
We need her there also. Want to start this Thursday?
If we can get Paul Bailey that soon, I guess that kinda...
Wanna try that? Why don't we set that tentatively for right now, then? And if it needs subject to change, we'll do it on the fly.
This Thursday?
Yes.
Thursday the 9th.
Okay. And you want me to keep it with Thursday and do it...
A week from Thursday.
Tuesday or Thursday this week.
That's fine.
What'd you say? And then two weeks on 23rd, you wanna do it that way? And if I can't get...
That's fine.
Mr. Bailey here on the 9th, I can get him here on the 23rd. See if that works.
And then because we might not have another meeting, we can always tentatively schedule the next one at the... just post it. Okay? Drops that? Want a motion set for the first meeting or...
It is a workshop. Still has to be posted.
Correct.
I make a motion we schedule our first budget meeting for March 9th from 3:00 to 5:00.
Do we have a time limit? We have to... we have to give it public social notice?
Yeah, it's gotta be posted.
Yeah, it's...
This'll be a special meeting, it'll have to be posted at least 18 hours before the meeting and for us to put the meeting together. So if there's any questions about posting it, noticing it, let me know. But the timing is at least 18 hours before the meeting.
18 hours?
No.
We should be able to do that, post it tomorrow or...
Yep.
Maybe until next...
Or this week, I think.
Yes, you'll still be able to.
Yeah, I was gonna shoot on the 4th first.
Okay. All right, who made the motion?
I don't have... nobody's recording, second.
Okay. Motion by treasurer Arnold, supported by trustee Gurley. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Letter H, Village of New Haven and Lennox Township fireworks request. I received a phone call from Mr. Dilbert and Mr. Robinson for support of this. He actually... Mr. Dilbert asked that he still does not have his approval, so if we were to approve this, it would be subject to the village approving it also. If they weren't going to approve it, we wouldn't have to be doing this. So once again, and Mr. Joppick, to give a legal opinion on this. Any questions? Mr. Joppick, did you wanna state it?
Yes, I do.
Please.
Because last year, we received a similar request, but it was different.
Correct.
Last year, the request came forward for participation in a donation to fireworks from a nonprofit charity. This year, we're receiving a request to partner with New Haven and to share in the cost of putting on the firework display. And the written communication we have from the school superintendent is that this is in relation to an Independence Day celebration that will be tied into the overall celebration. Last year, when I advised the board, there was no connection to an Independence Day celebration and the board members who are here would recall that I said if it were tied to Armistice Day, Independence Day, and I believe the statute allows one other sort of celebration, that the township is authorized to expend money for it if it's tied to Independence Day. It's for purposes to celebrate Independence Day and a couple other special days during the year. So there... what I indicated last year is if there's no statutory authorization or authorization in law to spend the money on the purpose, then you can't do it. Last year, we did have it. This year, we do have it. One thing I'd suggest, though, because we're joining with New Haven on this and to make it clear that everybody understands what's going on and who's gonna put on the fireworks and who's being paid the funds, what they're to go to, I would recommend that in addition to being subject to New Haven approving this, that it also be subject to a memorandum of understanding being put together between New Haven, the township, and the schools if they're the ones who are gonna be putting on the display or whatever it needs.
I agree.
In regards to that, I don't know who can answer this. We would be insured for this, right?
I talked to the school district, who's where the... it would take place. They said they would name us as an insured under their liability insurance.
And that's another... I didn't get into all the reasons I'm recommending a memorandum of understanding, but that's one of them. I'd also like in there some indemnification, whole harmless provisions, so that, yes, we're gonna provide funding for this, but we're essentially contracting with the schools or whoever to put on the fireworks and they're gonna be responsible for the fireworks.
I believe we couldn't be connected with the school.
We would be and that's why we would want a provision for indemnification.
Because it's on their property?
Yes, and also have us named on their insurance. That would all be in the memorandum of understanding. So I'd have a number of terms in there to do our best to protect the township from potential liability as well as the doctrine.
That's what I'm trying to do here, too.
Absolutely, we're on the same page.
Okay. Any other questions?
Pardon?
Any other questions?
I don't have any. I make a motion we approved with the addendum you're talking about, the consent agenda and everything that you just mentioned and on approval by New Haven, that I don't wanna share the whole cost of this or burden the whole cost. I do want to split it for the benefit of our residents in Lennox and New Haven, but I will not bear the whole price. I have a long as recovered by insurance and any liability whatsoever from this.
Yes, sir.
Now, they talk about an amount estimated at $4,500, would the board like to put a non-2000 seed along?
Non-2000 seed $4,500.
I'd like to cap it, yeah.
At $4,500.
At $4,500.
I'll second that motion. Any other? I have a motion by trustee Clifford, supported by supervisor Trombley. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Public comment? Any public comment this time?
I'm a little fuzzy on what just happened with that. I thought as a supervisor, you were the tiebreaker of things that happened. I didn't know you could actually make a motion.
Yes, I'm allowed to support a motion. Is that the attorney?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just curious where the money is gonna come for from for the fireworks. You know, we're on a budget here, cramping numbers, not giving raises. There was a spat last month about, you know, the insurance isn't this, the insurance isn't that. Now all of a sudden, we're gonna have $4,500 pulled out of our back pockets for this. I mean, I know it would... we weren't allowed to do this before because it's almost like a charity. And if it goes forward, I certainly hope that it is advertised quite a bit, so a lot of the Lennox residents know what's happening. Because a lot of the Lennox residents don't get notified about the community dinner. So if you're gonna have something that's for Lennox and New Haven, it needs to be publicized. Thank you.
Any other public comment? No more public comment? Need a motion? Chairman, please?
I'd like a motion we adjourned at 7:05.
I second. Motion by treasurer Arnold, supported by trustee Clifford. Any other question or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Any adjournment?